Good morning, everyone, and welcome to our Board of Commissioners meeting. We will begin, as is customary, with the observance of a moment of silence. Thank you. Please rise for a pledge to the flag.
The United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. It's now time for public comment, and the first on our agenda is Mr. Schroeder.
Great.
Would you like to come forward?
Thank you, Commissioner Philam. My name is Michael Schroeder. I live in South Danville Township, and I am speaking today as Secretary of the Lebanon County NWAHP and on behalf of the Executive Committee. And we have a number of members here. If you raise your hand or stand wherever you prefer. So, this is, we are basically, we've issued a letter to you, the County Commissioner, as we sent it to you a couple of days ago, expressing our deep concern about the pattern of responses by the Office of Lebanon County District Attorney here at GRAP. The allegations are right and sexual itself, as these are documented in a year-long investigation recently published in Pen Live, a special report on sex crimes. The nine articles in this series are listed in the URLs at the end of this, end of the letter, and I have to have hard copies here that I'd like to share with you of all nine. Okay? For each of you. I'm not going to read the rest of the letter here. I'm just going to kind of summarize it. We're also making it publicly available to the, to the press. It actually, the letter that we sent to you actually is two letters in one, because it also has an appendix, the letter that we sent to the district attorney. So, our ask here for you, as the county commissioners, is that you look carefully into this matter by asking the district attorney's office to respond publicly and in writing to the questions we posed in her letters directed to her office. And again, the letter is included here. And we asked, we asked four questions of the county commissioner. Actually, now only three are viable, because one has been taken off the table by a gag order that was issued yesterday in the case of Veronica Rodriguez. But mainly, to kind of summarize, we look at the, at the banner on the website, on the webpage of the district attorney, and they have their mission statement there, which is great. And it says, "Our office mission statement is promoting safety through innovative and collaborative approaches to crime prevention and prosecution, while maintaining our commitment to victim rights, offender rehabilitation, consumer protection, and public engagement." And the Pen Live investigation of the pattern of responses by, by the Office of the District Attorney to the sexual abuse allegations appears to show an egregious failure to fulfill its commitment to victims' rights, and an equally egregious failure to fulfill its commitment to public engagement. Now, we know that you, as county commissioners, have no authority over the district attorney's office. We're not asking you to change any policies, but we also know that you have a voice, and we're asking you to use that voice in order to try to probe this very troubling pattern of responses to allegations of sexual, of sexual violence. So, that summarizes it. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else for public comment this morning? Yes? Was that a yes? Yeah.
Just did what he said.
Okay, all righty. Nothing else, then we'll move on to the approval of the minutes of our December 5th meeting and our workshop executive sessions of December 11th, 17th, and 18th as part of your packets.
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes as presented.
In seconds.
It's been moved and seconded that we approve those minutes as presented. Are there any additions, deletions, or corrections? Hearing none, all in favor, please indicate by saying aye. Aye. Post same signs, so moved. Mrs. Nguyen, good morning.
Good morning.
May I add just a comment to the agenda, please? Take one minute. Thank you. I just wanted to make sure, because I feel it's public information, that the policy of the county has gone from 10 to two years in retention of emails. That's everything.
Thank you. All right. Very good. Now, Mrs. Nguyen. Our county treasurer.
We had received some 1217 and 1218 of 1,392,289.57. That brought us to total cash of $2,437,498.80. In expenditures, $1,982,804.61. Our tax claim is $32,369.83. Excuse me. Leaves a balance of $422,324.36.
Your motion?
Make a motion to approve the treasurer's report subject to all of it.
Second. It's been moved and seconded that we approve Mrs. Nguyen's report as presented. Any questions regarding her report? Hearing none, all in favor, please indicate by saying aye. Aye. Post same sign, so moved. Anything else?
Yes, you have something. We have, I have done new agreements with the municipalities that we collect taxes for. Our rate went up to a dollar from 50 cents for each tax collected, for each bill collected.
A dollar fifty?
No, it went from 50 cents to a dollar. So, we have 22 municipalities now that we do this for. It's for the city of Lebanon, Cleota Borough, Cornwall Borough, Jonestown, Mount Gretna is a new one this year. We'll just start those as of the beginning of 2025. Marshawn Borough, Palmyra, Richland, Amel Township, East Tannover, Heidelberg, Jackson, North Cornwall, North Lebanon, North Londonberry, South Amel, South London, South Londonberry, Sutara Union, West Cornwall, and West London. So, those are the 22 that we applied for. We have new agreements that need to be approved.
We do them in one sweeping motion?
Yes, please. I think we can do that, Jamie, correct?
Okay, I'll, I'll move to approve that action.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded that we approve those tax collection agreements. Any questions regarding the motion? Hearing none, all in favor, please indicate by saying aye. Aye. Post same signs, so moved. Thank you, Stephanie.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Introduce yourself.
Michelle Sabely, Director of Human Resources. Under resignations and terminations, we have Jay Barkholder, Substitute Mail Transporter at Area Agency on Aging, termination effective December 16th. Douglas Stumpf, Substitute Senior Center Manager in, he was a floater in Area Agency on Aging Retirement, effective February 7th, 2025. Samia Santiago, caseworker two, children and youth, resignation effective January 3rd, 2025. Samantha Beck, caseworker one, children and youth, recent offer of employment, December 16th. Jonathan Zekman, Casual Operations Line Officer, Department of Emergency Services, resignation effective March 18th. Louise Matthews, DJ Office Support One, and DJ Figaro, resignation effective December 20th. Danielle Gray, casework Supervisor One, and MHIDEI, resignation effective December 27th. And Lisa Bray, Casual Call LPN at the Renova Center, resignation effective December 7th.
I move to approve the resignations and terminations as presented.
Second. It's been moved and seconded that we approve those and transactions. I'd just like to specially recognize the service of Doug Stumpf. He's always been a very good representative for the Area Agency on Aging, and we missed. Any other comments? Hearing none, all in favor, please indicate by saying aye. Aye. Post same signs, so moved.
Under leaves of absence, Teresa Lazquez, Renova Center, two-week leave of absence, all unpaid, effective December 13th, return January 4th, 2025.
Motion approved.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded that we approve that leave. Any questions? Hearing none, all in favor, please indicate by saying aye. Okay? Post same signs, so moved.
Moving on to changes of status, transfers, and promotions. Julia K., SH Downs, promotion from caseworker one in children and youth to caseworker two, at the rate of $1,661.28 by weekly, effective December 22nd. Caitlin Walburn, voluntary demotion from Child Abuse Investigator in children and youth to caseworker two, rate of $1,723.54 by weekly. This is at the 2025 rate, as it is effective January 5th, 2025.
Make a motion to approve changes and statuses.
Second. It's been moved and seconded that we approve those transactions. Any questions or comments? Not all in favor, please indicate by saying aye. Aye. Post same signs, so ordered.
Another transaction, I have a motion to approve the recommendation of President Judge Tilok to add a third interpreter stipend in the probation services department adult unit, rate of $1,500 annually, effective immediately.
Motion approved.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded that we approve President Judge Tilok's request. Any questions? Hearing none, all in favor, please indicate by saying aye. Aye. Post same signs, so moved.
Children and youth would like to hire Juanita Aguera Samuel, Admin Assistant One, at the rate of $1,297.38 by weekly, effective December 30th. Children and youth would like to hire the following two caseworker ones, both at the rate of $1,562.16 by weekly, both effective December 30th, and that is Kristen Leininger and Lauren Wade. President Judge Tilok would like to hire Michaela Light as an office support two, at the rate of $1,154.07 by weekly, and this is at the 2025 rate, as it is effective January 6th, 2025. President Judge Tilok would like to hire Colin Dudanowicz as an adult probation officer one, at the rate of $1,866.86 by weekly, effective December 23rd, 2024. President Judge Tilok would like to hire Sarah McCain as a collections officer, at the rate of $1,307.52 by weekly, effective December 30th, 2024.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded that we approve those transactions. Any questions regarding the motion? Hearing none, all in favor, please indicate by saying aye. Aye. Post same signs, so moved.
There are no questions regarding the transactions presented. Is there a motion to adopt those transactions or to the salary?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded that we approve those salary board transactions. Questions regarding the motion? Hearing none, all in favor, please indicate by saying aye. Aye. Post same signs, so moved. Thank you, Michelle.
No.
Good morning. Let me introduce yourself and then proceed.
Good morning. Holly Leakey, Administrator for Lubbock County, Mental Health, Intellectual Disabilities, Early Intervention Programs. I'm here this morning to present and request approval for contract amendments for providers fiscal year 2024, 2025. There are 10 contract amendments in total. That would be three for mental health, five for early intervention, and two for intellectual disabilities. These are predominantly for increased units, so for individuals who have needed increased units of services. The total amount of the contract amendments is $91,454. These would be covered through our current allocations, our current budget. So, we are not requesting any additional company tax dollars to cover these expenditures.
Motion. I'll make a motion to approve those contract amendments as presented.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded that we approve those amendments. Any questions? Not all in favor, please indicate by saying aye. Aye. Post same signs, so moved.
Thank you.
Thank you. Merry Christmas.
Merry Christmas.
Merry Christmas.
Good morning. Good morning. Would you like to introduce yourself, then, Laura Harris?
Thank you. Audrey Fortin, Director of Probation Services. And good morning. I am here to present a contract for VigilNet. And VigilNet is our provider for electronic monitoring devices that we utilize for house arrest, and they also provide our SCRAM bracelets, which is the alcohol monitor. We've been working with them since 2014. They came to us with, in a presentation of a new device. Whereas they did not offer GPS bracelets previously, we were utilizing another company. They now have that option. We've tested the product and the software, and we are very pleased with the product. So, I am presenting this new contract to you. I am very pleased to say that we, it also includes a reduction in costs for the county, which you don't hear very often these days. So, I respectfully ask your support of this new contract.
We're going to go to the, oh, wait.
I was just going to say, I will gladly make a motion to reduce our cost, yes.
Second. It's been moved and seconded. Would you mind just explaining the cost in a little more detail?
Yes, sure. So, there are two different tables that are part of the contract. Years ago, long before I was in this seat, we purchased not specific bracelets, but the concept of 30 bracelets with the company. And we get a different rate for those bracelets, which is even lower. So, if we were to use a SCRAM bracelet that is Kelly-owned, we are charged $7.50 a day for that. Once we exceed the 30, then the price becomes $9 a day.
How many?
$9 per day. The new GPS bracelet, we were being charged $5.25 per day. For those, it has dropped down to $4.25 per day. So, if our numbers remain about the same, I will see one-fifth reduction.
And there's the cost of these per diems.
So, we do pay monthly for the cost, but the cost of the electronic monitoring and SCRAM is then assessed to the individuals who are on the devices. It's added right onto their fines, costs, fees, and restitution, and they pay for that.
Okay. Yes.
You, there are three different ways of, of monitoring landline, Ethernet, and cellular. Yes, I'm, I'm curious, and if you ever run into it, and if you do, what happens? Do you run into probationers who don't have coverage? They may live somewhere where their coverage is, is cellular coverage.
Yes.
Isn't great, so that's not reliable. And if they don't have either of the other two, if there's no Wi-Fi, no landline, do you run into that? And in that case, are they ineligible then, or what do you do?
No. So, previously, the company we were using is contracted with one, they were contracted, I believe, with Verizon, so we could only use those towers. So, one nice, another nice thing about this is they have bracelets, and most of the ones that we will use will be Verizon, but if we find that there is, someone is in an area where it's not working, they have options for AT&amp;T as well, and I believe another service. So, we do have other options, which is nice. The other thing that helps is we have home units. When it absolutely will not work with communicating with the cell towers, there's like a home base that we can put into a residence, and the phrase that will communicate with that home base.
Anything else? It's been moved and seconded. All in favor of the motion, please indicate by saying aye. Aye. Post. It's removed.
This is already, the savings is already in the budget, because she addressed this at budget hearing. We changed the numbers at that time, but this is the contract now affecting that.
Thanks, Audrey.
Thank you.
To you.
Thank you. You're welcome.
Jamie, we're a little ahead. Do you want to slip anything in that we?
We can. I might. Let's do the elevator bids, and then we'll see where we are.
Okay. Good morning.
Good morning. Danielle, I'm purchasing. I'm looking for approval to move forward with the modernization of the judge's elevators and award the bid to the lowest bidder. We have received three, two, which made all the qualifications, and we have had field elevator with the low bid of $232,887. This was approved with last year's budget, which, which was $260,000 to cover it.
Just to read off what the other competing bids were.
Sure. We also have Cardinal Elevator with $282,648, and Wright Elevator with $298,800.
Okay. Any, any questions regarding this motion? Yes, James?
Yeah, with your paperwork, you have 232,000 here, but up here it says.
That's for additional work if we required it. So, if we want to add some different upgrades to it, that would be for those upgrades.
Jury is submitting right now for the.
Yes.
Make a motion to approve the bid for the elevators presented.
Second. It's been moved and seconded. If there are further questions, all in favor, please indicate by saying aye. Aye. Post same signs, so moved. Thank you.
Yeah, I can do a few things that I was going to. We'll see where we are. I'm going to hold on the, on the RFA allocation request, though, for the, for the end of the meeting. All right?
Yes.
First, hotel tax grant fund requests or applications for the Pennsylvania Chautauqua Foundation for the Mount Gretna Visitors Center Summer Ambassador Program for 2025, Mount Gretna, which, as I say, gave a, a narrative with the, the grant request. They are requesting $5,000 grant out of a project cost of $8,000. They point out here the destination, that Gretna is a destination for thousands of visitors every year. They have an active arts community, including Gretna Music, Gretna Theater, the Cicada Festival, Gretna Art School, Gretna School of Art, Chautauqua Summer Programs, et cetera. They have their staff person last year helped well over 2,000 visitors. Keeps pamphlets from various points of interest in Lebanon County stocked and displayed outside the center. 100% of the funds hired for hiring the staff came from donors, and this grant, if it's funded, again, for 2025. The, do you want me to do them separately? Go to the other.
Is that all? I'll, I'll make a motion to approve that. I don't know. What?
I have a question.
Do you have a second?
I guess I do, but I do have a question. Thank you. Would we be more prudent? I was shocked at the other thing coming up on our agenda here with the potential price tag. Should we be looking at investing in that building? Or is that not going to allow use of funds to house all the people coming into the county? I don't know. It just... Is there a possibility of using some of those, the funds, and we don't have that many, really? Just a thought.
Not sure I'm following you.
In other words, can we use some of the hotel tax for the building they want to put up out there at the Expo?
I would say no.
Because of the housing incoming tourists?
Yes, sir, we can, but I can't change it. I'll just say, they're looking for $6 million. We only have 30. We're, we're always scrambling. We keep reducing the amount per, you know, we're down to 5,000. So, I would say these, these funds are, you know, very limited in terms of how many grants we can do. So, I wouldn't be inclined to, to entertain.
We're so focused on that rather than showing.
That's just my... We're, we're always suggesting that we, you know, have to put things off, because we don't have the money and the fund.
Yeah, we don't. That's why.
We currently have a balance of $27,907, I didn't cover.
I guess the answer is, I'd prefer not, or I'm a no on that. But let's, we, we have a motion to second with regard to the Chautauqua. And any other comments or questions?
They're, they're both really good programs, and they do bring in a lot of people. I just wondered if we wanted to at least air the possibility of using some of the money for the building.
Right. Well, we're doing one at a time, and this is, I'm sorry.
Yes. So, I'm, I'm confused. So, Chautauqua Foundation, is that five grand? And then Mount Gretna Summer Concerts is what?
Five grand.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, I didn't, I didn't read that.
Oh, you didn't get, okay, I'm sorry.
We're doing it one at a time, in case there's a, you know, some dispute about the amount or something.
And I think, if I just want to be clear, you're referring to an item on the agenda next for the exposition hall at the, at the Expo Center. You're proposing the use.
I just wondered if we should be considering using some of the funds for that versus just these applications that come in. Well, I got two no's, so.
Okay, still the motion.
Yes.
Still. Anything else? All in favor of allocating 5,000 to Chautauqua, please indicate by saying aye. Aye. Post, so moved.
Okay, and the second one is for the Mount Gretna Summer Concerts. This is be used for advertising for the Mount Gretna Summer Concert Series 2025. The project has held at the Mount Gretna Camp Meeting Tabernacle. They have a total project cost, as they outline in the attachment, total project cost of $7,900, requesting $5,000 toward it. They do note in here that there are professional musicians and their followers who come from the greater Philadelphia area, New York, and New Jersey. They do rent the 44 camp meeting cottages that are available for short stays and book nearby hotel rooms.
Motion.
Make a motion to approve the $1,000 as requested.
Second. It's been moved and seconded. All in favor, excuse me, any comments regarding the motion? Discussion, hearing none, all in favor, please indicate by saying aye. Aye. Post same signs, so moved. I would ask if the Chautauqua, Susan Restetter, could be asked to give more specific indications how it deals with overnight stays. There's enough, there's enough meat there for me to say yes to this, but it, you know, we're trying to zero in on the, the overnight stays, and I think they relied in that, that particular area, so. Okay. What's next?
Uh, it could. I don't have time for them yet.
Yeah.
Do these two, then we'll hold.
Okay.
Okay. The Disabled Veteran Exemption Requests, meeting the requirements for the program for property tax exemption, Donald Shearer of West Oak Street, Lebanon, Daniel Rich of Swetara Creek Drive, Jonestown, and Robert McQuade of Elizabeth Run Drive, Fredericksburg.
Motion to approve this.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded that we approve those exemptions for taxes, real estate taxes. Any questions regarding this motion? Hearing none, all in favor, please indicate by saying aye. Aye. Post same signs, so moved.
I have, as far as boards go, I have a resignation that's been submitted from Shyla Ulrich, who is resigning as a member of the Housing Authority of Lebanon County. She notes in her letter that it's been an honor to serve, long dedicated, one-site dedicated professionals. She's transitioning to a new role as President of the Central Pennsylvania Food Bank, and remains committed to advocating for those facing systemic barriers, including housing, food, and security, and wants to express her appreciation of the commissioners for trusting her with this role and for the ongoing collaboration that's been a cornerstone of the Happing Authority.
Make a motion to approve Shyla's resignation with regret, but at the same time with congratulations for her new position.
Second. It's been moved and seconded. Any comments? Not all in favor, please indicate by saying aye. Aye. Post same signs, so moved.
And Jen Cuzzo is here from the Visit Lebanon Valley. We have proposed changes to the Visit Lebanon Valley Board for 2025. Jen, the Rick Stammel, Carrie Royer, et cetera, are those reappointments?
They're all in board members that just reassigned, re-executive. Ulrich is stepping up to Chair as a board member, owner of Ancestor Coffee. Suzanne as Chair is stepping down to past Chair.
Okay, so, and Mike Emery and Scott Traul, they're all due to term limits. So, you have a new board member of Matt Gudzinski. That's what we probably need to take after.
Yes, is the Assistant General Manager of the therapy.
Okay. So, would need action on Matt Gudzinski as a new member of the Visit Lebanon Valley Board for 2025.
Okay. Is there a motion to that?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded that we've had a board member. Any questions? Not all in favor, please indicate. Not all in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Post same signs. So moved.
Then we'll go to Mr. Kerwin.
Yep.
Morning.
Gentlemen.
Good here.
Yeah, let's all sit down. Right. Good morning, gentlemen. If you'd like to introduce yourselves and then whoever's going to begin can set the program up and then you can proceed.
Good morning. My name is Pat Kerwin. I'm with the Lebanon Valley Expo Center in Fairgrounds.
My name is Tom Sieg. I'm a CPA in Lebanon, but I'm on the Expo Board and I'm going to record on our grant status where we're finding a motion to approve.
Okay, you want to take the floor then, Tom? Pat, do you want to go first with the project or then I'll?
Okay, I'd be glad to do that. I did just deliver earlier a synopsis of the project and I don't know if you have any questions on that or not. Well, first of all, I'd like to say thank you for all your past support, ongoing support of the Expo Center. You guys have been wonderful, not only financial support, but also the package there during the fair, volunteering almost every day and I appreciate it immensely. They're very fortunate. Obviously, this request is for a new, large, multipurpose exposition hall to be built on the current Expo property. The estimated cost is between $5.5 and $6 million. To date, the Expo Center has secured $4.5 million from the state and Tom's going to talk a little bit about that, which I think that substantial grant from the state is an indication or the support that they recognize this great asset and it's the economic activity that it creates for Lebanon County. And we are, nothing to do with me, but we are very fortunate in Lebanon County to have this facility. I just have to say that was very prescriptive of people who came before. The Lebanon County, I know the tourist bureau shared with you statistics about visitors to Lebanon County. And I think it indicates on there that about 30% of those visitors to the Expo Center are from beyond the 30-mile radius, which is implying that perhaps they're overnight guests. I'm not going to say how many people that visit the Expo Center say at area hotels. That would be a whole study unto itself. But we do obviously drive a lot of people to that facility from beyond the area. And I know the, in the net in the Click Lewis Arena, they also have a looks like they have a larger attendance perhaps than the Expo Center. But I did think I should mention that I have a grandson who plays soccer there. A lot of those people that go to those facilities are there repeatedly week after week as compared to the Expo Center where our functions are all different. So I think we're driving people from turnovers not as much greater, so.
Sorry. The system is being replaced. It's budgeted for next year. But unfortunately, you're one of the last victims of it.
So, and I think that report also showed that demonstrated that the Expo Center attendance is increasing near to, you know, over the past 15 years. So things seem to be going very, very well there. This exposition hall is just in the early stages of design because we just got notification about being able to receive this $4 million from $5,000 from the state. So we don't have a lot of details yet on the on the structure itself. We were looking about hopefully in the neighborhood of 40,000 square feet, which is a large facility, free span without any poles. And of course, air conditioned, heated, et cetera. The North Hall, for example, which you're all familiar with, is 15,000 square feet. So this would be like almost three times the size of.
Make us opportunities for bigger venues that we can't compete with right now.
We have the demand for larger, greater space. The fact that I had a call yesterday from an event that comes in January every year, Cabin Fever Expo, he said he's there from Allentown. He said, I hear you're going to build a new building. He was so excited about it. He wanted to know when it's going to be completed. So I said, well, that'll be a little while. But that's in essence what we're trying to do. We're here to ask if the county again would be willing to make a contribution from the funds for this event, for this facility. You've been very supportive in the past and my feeling is regardless of your decision, we thank you for what you've done for us already and continue to do. And Tom can talk about the money.
It starts. I did disagree with one thing you said that you don't want to take any credit for the growth and the prosperity out there. But I will say that I think it's your relationships and the good work you're doing out there. It's almost, at least in my experience, unanimous with the vendors and with the Expo Board. So thank you.
Thank you. But we, what staff and what word was on the end?
Yes, sir.
Before he starts the numbers, I just, before you get away from the building itself, if I understand correctly, for those familiar with the with the property, this, the location would be what is currently the, I guess everyone sees as the dairy, the dairy barn area or no?
No, it would be the cattle pavilions which are open, which are in excess of 35 years old.
Yeah.
And falling apart. You know, that's a site and we talk about different sites, but the thing that it's meant to replace, we have three cattle show areas that are open. They're they're almost like an open sided with the pavilion and those are in pretty rough shape.
Yeah, we're talking about the same. In my mind, I'm at the same place. I just called it a dairy barn again. So it's it's between the Brightville Arena and the track.
Yeah.
Essentially, and that comes down.
Yeah.
That's that becomes the footprint. It's a larger footprint than than that, than where that is?
The preliminary draft would have it almost on that same, yeah, which was looked at from the standpoint of stormwater management. But this building will trigger a whole master plan for stormwater for the Expo Center where
that's what I was going to get into.
Okay.
Yes.
Just one location down there.
Again, I had said I'm on the Expo Board. I work on finances and I'm the minor committee and there's two garbage men here for the fair that serve on the garbage.
You are our inspiration. Yes.
So anyway, we we have jobs secured. No one wants those jobs. But anyway, the the building itself, it will be about 40,000 square feet, hopefully. Just to give perspective on that, an acre, if I'm not mistaken, it's about 43,500, 5/6. So it's all but an acre. It's 90% of an acre. The reason, as Pat said, that we're looking at pretty much $6 million for the building and then we're trying to raise enough money to do site plan. This will trigger stormwater management issues and ingress and egress. So we're going to have to do a more comprehensive site plan than we have and and deal with that. So just to run through the finances, we have applied for and received a RAC B grant, which is a Development Assistance Capital Program grant from the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania. That's administered by the Governor's Office. And what happens is you fill out an extensive form, you submit it, and essentially then whatever questions come up at that level, you have to answer. And again, I'm going to give a lot of credit to our Senator Christopher Gebhardt. He did, he got sponsored us and did a really nice job in getting us that money. Again, you know, there are questions that you have to answer and there's the lengthy form that needed being filled out and that was all completed. So we have that grant. That's promised and actually contractually obligated to pay us. And then we got a Keystone Community Grant, a KCP grant from the Department, that's a DCED grant for $500,000 and that's been promised. And so those are our promised funds that we have contracts for. We're here today to ask for $250,000 for, from the ARPA funds, which that was the American Rescue Plan Act that during the period of, well, you got, the commissioners know what it is, but just to fill in the blank, it was basically set up by the Biden administration that was to help our economy recover. And so that we're asking for, respectfully asking for today. And then the two other amounts, there's an LSA grant, which is a a local share account from, again, from DCED. And Representative Schlegel, who represents North Cornwall Township, is sponsoring us for that. We have the application in. He has shepherded it. Through the process, we will get a decision probably March or April timetable. That would be our timetable. And then the second other request, that was for a million dollars, and we have a request for our representative user for our particular district at the federal level. And he's working, trying to get on some sort of grant. We don't have a timetable, but I guess that that is committed to getting us the money. So what we have is basically about six and a half, $6 million towards the building if we get those grants. And then with the Keystone Community Grant and the ARPA money, we were hoping to get our engineering site planning completed, be in compliance with the county laws and so on and so forth. So that's kind of an overview of the finances. To give you some idea, $6 million sounds like an awful lot of money to me. But the issue, but when you look at what we're getting, 40,000 square feet, if you do math, that's about $150 a square foot when you're talking about houses and storage buildings and that. It it puts it in perspective. It's just the size of it is what drives the price of. It's not going to be, we say $6 million, it's not going to have saunas and all kinds of luxury items. It's not at all what this is. It's just the sheer size that requires that.
It'll have better than 60 amp service.
Yeah.
Which is what we now have.
Yeah, what Fisher Phillips is basically referring to is the cattle areas have 60 amp services. So my son Daniel's the chairman of the fair and the cattle are washed and groomed to make them look perfect. And they, he has to organize so many people at times to use their hair dryers. So I mean, it's it's not a good situation with what we have. It served its purpose where we outgroomed.
Yeah. And Tom, I want to mention that you you took this initiative to do the encouraging conversations with Senator Debhardt and also the application process. This, but for you, that we wouldn't be sitting here talking about this 40,000 square feet. So I'm just saying, you guys are both too modest about your, the impact you're having out there and we appreciate it very much.
Yeah, we're, I mean, these other grants, I am trying my best and I hope I'm successful, but yeah, I promise, I promise I'll try the best I can. Can come to us.
I appreciate all of the work that you have put into this. So first, I'm hearing about it. And I'm surprised I didn't get more detailed grant application, a copy of one that maybe went through already and was processed. So I have a better handle on the details. I was wondering if I could get that, number one. And number two, traditionally, the Expo Board and the commissioners will share. I, everything that was said, I didn't hear how much the Expo Board is putting into this personally, so to speak.
Personally?
Yeah.
I can't answer your question. And you're saying financially?
You know, as part of the budget, what is, what kind of money is the Expo Board putting in?
We're going to have carrying costs on it for a year or so till it's built. So where are you going to use our funding for carrying costs? Being fined this interest, these monies come back to you when the project is complete, not to start. So you really have to carry, let's say, half of $6 million for a year and a half or two-year period. So that's going to be our contribution, carrying costs.
And can you estimate those? So I have an idea of.
Oh, I mean, if you if you look at $3 million at six or seven, say 6%, that's going to be 180 a year for two years. Plus, we're going to have insurance and.
180,000 a year plus insurance?
Yeah.
Yeah, I'd just like to see something, you know, some sort of a budget like that. So I know exactly what's going on. It's hard to follow, to come in and absorb all these numbers at one time.
It is a public record what we got. I mean, I can give them.
But I didn't know it existed. I mean, you, there's millions of public records out there. You have to know what you're asking.
I mean, we didn't do it secretly.
Okay.
There's no, we tend to cover anything.
I didn't say there was. I just said, I haven't heard of it.
Okay.
If I read the papers and things, maybe they covered it. I didn't see it. But I'd like an itemized list. Make sure I have it right.
Okay. Again, you know, maybe the board owes you an apology, but you have a representative of the commissioners on our board and.
We're not allowed to discuss things that might come through.
Maybe I failed in my, I guess we made our understanding. We assumed that. What do you, we'll get you what you need.
Thank you. That's all I ask.
Okay.
Um, Tom, the local share account from DCED that Representative Schlegel was sponsoring, how much was that?
We asked for a million dollars.
Okay, thank you.
Trying to, you know, he's trying to advocate.
And just one other question. One of the things I think a lot of people do in Lebanon County is wonder if this is going to be almost akin to a convention center where a convention could come in, or is this more going to be an agricultural use building?
It's going to be a multipurpose facility, a big open space. And we obviously continue to focus on agriculture, but also we want to attract other events and.
So while it doesn't have saunas in it, will it have?
Bathrooms.
Restrooms.
Yeah. I think the one thing that's pretty evident to us is that you can't, if you just have an agriculture, it's empty very often and we need to rely upon rentals to help pay the bills, the, you know, utilities, repairs, maintenance and all that.
That's why I'm wondering, is that is that a a feature that you will try to, you know, publicize or try to advertise as being a venue that a convention could come to?
Sure. And and it's not only just conventions, like for example, the farm equipment manufacturers, like John Deere in New Holland and Case, they, if they have like a regional maintenance seminar, they need open area and they need big garage doors. Like if you want to try to put a combine in any of our buildings, we could not put one in West Hall. It would not fit. So in order to have the ability, because we now got, have lodging and food available. So before we could never get anything like that because we had no lodging or food. So with the pilot development, we have lodging and food. And so this building would could have a we had Expo Center for a particular group or else it could be for like the maintenance center, that type of thing.
Thank you.
Are there any concept drawings in these applications that went to the state? I'd like to see some drawings of whatever.
It was just a preliminary drawing and we'd love to share that.
I mean, I have nothing. This is. Yeah.
It usually, as Tom has said, usually you have the project, but you have no money. We have the money or a good chunk of it, and now we got to get exactly what the board sees and what the, you know, the folks come up with as the.
And the reason for that is to get to the point to be able to build this, to be permitted and have all the site work and engineering and everything, we could spend a ton of money. And if we didn't have the ability to do it, we would have wasted it. So we kind of had to approach it, do we have the money and then do it? Sort of, but as Fisher Phillips said, a little bit backwards of what you might think, but there is a very good reason for doing it that way.
I have two things. Two, I guess, one is a question, the other is just a mention. Caught my eye here, you you referred to the Expo Center often serving as a designated emergency evacuation shelter. We, when we train, it's often part of that process, you know, where we identify the, depending on where the emergency or the training or the scenario is, you know, the expo becomes a place to to go for shelter or whatever. I'm going to, I don't want to be too presumptuous, but I assume this would increase that capacity as well.
Absolutely.
Providing it's available in the event of an emergency, this would be another another building available.
We were, I don't know if we, we had an agreement with the courthouse here and I don't know if that's still in place with the new emergency center. If we go there instead or.
Yeah, that's our, that's our backup.
But yeah, we have formal agreements with some of the school, including Northern Lebanon School District, because we're within the 10-mile radius for their, if they have an emergency situation, they would bring their kids here. At Cornwall, Lebanon, they're going to walk them down the rails to trail into the Expo Center and then they disperse from there.
Right.
So we also serve as a staging area for a med aid in the event there's a catastrophe. So it also serves as a staging area for a med aid in the event there's a catastrophe. There's a lot of little things going, you know, that are benefits to the community.
You use the main hall and the west hall for that sort of thing. And this, I'm just, again, I don't want to be too presumptuous, but I assume here's forty thousand more square feet that could possibly be used for that specifically. And the second is just to mention and anticipate here, the RACP, the redevelopment assistance capital program grant, requires a governmental body to administer that. And I'm anticipating you're going to ask that the county just, it's essentially a pass through. You know, we have to become the application that's submitted for that money and then the drawdowns pass through. And the county has done that for some hospital projects, I believe. Lebanon Valley College, possibly we did that, I'm trying to remember which ones. But so that's something just coming along down the line, once you have that sort of thing.
And we may need that for the L S A grant also. North Cornwall is our hometown ship and if they can sponsor it, fine. If not, we'll probably come here and request the county. Same thing, it would be a pass through.
Yeah.
Anything else?
Yeah, we have one more question. With this increased building and you want to bring more people in, right now, when we have these big events, the parking is, you know, it's filled. Where are you going to park everybody?
This includes more parking. We're anticipating adding to the parking capacity.
Where?
Well, that's probably maybe there's capacity in front of North Hall. I don't know if the North Hall, the big hall with the red brick, that whole area, that there's capacity there. We have the capacity to the, looking from the front to the left of that, for additional parking too. But additional parking will have to be part of this.
And also the area on the western side.
Yes.
Southwestern side is a big open hayfield that's not...
But that's been used for vendor parking.
Very, not all the way back, of course, there are a couple of rooms.
Parking with...
Trailers and all that. I mean, I walked that area and that's packed with, I didn't know where you're going to put any more cars.
Well, our biggest event, of course, is the fair and that's the one that's the big challenge with parking. And for that, we use the soccer fields and we use the, that whole area, even the horse rigs. She put cars in the horse rigs for, but that's a, that's a one time here thing where everything is at capacity. I don't, that's just an unusual thing. I don't, I think we'll have to add additional parking and that's all part of this study to make sure we're shooting ourselves in the foot, you know. I do have some good news.
This is all good news.
Some additional good news.
There you go.
This week, we got word from the PennDOT that we finally have permission to widen our driveway. As you all know, that's a bit of a problem for us. So that's been a long process, but so that'll occur at the beginning of, well, when the weather breaks for next year. That was good news and I thank everybody for helping us with that too. You know, that involved a lot of people from Lebanon County that support.
Very good. All right, well, thank you for coming in. Oh, yes, I'm sorry, Jim, go ahead.
Several questions. I want to understand a couple of things, Tom. The grant is from the governor's office, that's part of the funding he gets every year. That one's coming like R P A or?
RACP.
RACB?
RACB, yeah.
Yeah, and how much was that, did you say?
Four million.
That's four million, okay, I'm sorry.
I had four and a half, we changed that.
Well, that's, no, it's four million, the other five hundred is Keystone Community Grant. In other words, official, it's this four million is the RACB grant and the five hundred thousand that we already have is the Keystone Community Grant.
I had the additional five hundred thousand there, so maybe I misunderstood.
Okay.
And then how much of that, like, is firmly committed? You talked to like some aren't committed, these are, Schlegel's trying to get money. How much is actually committed to the project?
Okay, the RACB grant is committed, that's from the governor's office. That was the one that Senator Geller was very instrumental in. I thank, I can't thank him enough for doing that and helping us. But the Keystone Community Grant is committed. And then without being presumptuous, we're hoping that you vote in favor of the R cap grant, which leaves two million dollars uncommitted. The first is the L S A program with Representative Schlegel from our North Cornwall District. And he has already started the process of supporting us by writing letters and making contacts and so on and so forth. And then the user money, we do not have a specific program. He's trying to define where it could fit in the federal government. So I have very little information for you on that.
That's fine. And then Pat, as far as use of that building when it comes to the fair, would that be like the dairy? Because that's taken away the dairy area, where there'll be dairy shows in there. Is that where the dairy cattle will be, you know, kept for, housed for the week during the fair? Why do you think the primary use would be?
For animals.
Yeah. For showing and housing?
Yeah, and you know, part of the, I just, not to bore you or anything, but like when you, there's a, with the four H kids, they have show beef animals, for example. So there's a prize for the best animal, but there's also a prize for fit and finishing an animal. And the reason, like, if you have an animal that the back's curved like that, you cut its hair so it's straight. So fit and finishing is an art and they have a program for that. And what I was saying is my son has to be like a little policeman and go over and allow only so many people at a time to use their hair dryers and their washing facilities, because we don't have, you know, there's not enough amperage. You know, a sixty amp service does not, does not handle too much. So, and that's, so it would be used to probably for housing and fit and finishing and then showing, showing.
And Pat, if you had to turn away anyone because your capacity is limited as it currently is, and then you said, well, we don't have space to do that right now, but with the addition of this building, it could maybe house a smaller event while other events are happening simultaneously. Has that been an issue at the...
It is, I mean, and actually, if we get those kind of large inquiries, I usually refer them to the farm show complex because they have that capacity. Actually, I had a call yesterday afternoon from a woman from Missouri who was interested in doing a very large consumer show. And she wondered how many thousands of square feet we have in an open hall. And I gave her that information, but we have roughly seventy-five thousand square feet in the entire facility. So that's using all the halls. And of course, I explained to her that, you know, we have these large overhead doors that we can open up and that's the way they're utilized so people can flow from one building to the other. And then she was going to send me an email because I told her about our website, but I haven't heard from her. But I didn't know if that was because we didn't have one large big hall, you know, because sometimes that's a problem. We had our Christmas at the expo this year. They had over six thousand people attend over three days, which is a good number. And they do all kinds of signage there saying, don't forget hall number one or hall number two, because they try to direct people around to get to the various locations. So a really large hall like this is desirable from a promoter standpoint. You know, they can get everything in one hall. Now, they, obviously, that's not always going to be the case, but having this capacity would be a big help to us.
Well, I would like to propose that a motion to just table this until our next meeting, because I haven't seen a complete list of the ARPA grants that we have and what money's left. I had asked for that, but I didn't, I don't think I have a copy of that.
Handing that out last week.
Yeah.
And we were going to mail my copies. At this point, we were just thanking them for being here, but we're going to be considering all the ARPA's later.
Right.
In the...
That's all I was asking.
Yeah, please.
I'll just take a look.
Okay, well, if nothing else for you gentlemen, we appreciate everything you've done and this is a great present for Lebanon County if we get this thing up and running. Thank you very much.
Thank you, your service.
Don't remember seeing.
Can I ask, when you do evaluate the ARPA applications? Because I know we're coming up on deadlines.
Yeah, it's next.
It's next, you won't have to wait too long.
Oh.
Because we have to allocate by the end of this year.
That was my question.
Yeah, by the end of twenty-six is when the money has to be used. But we have to earmark it right now.
Is that our segue?
Could be. Thank you, Laura.
All right, that's the, the only remaining thing I have on the list of items to present is for your consideration of final ARPA allocations. For action to be had on that so that we can wrap that up and go into the portal for ARPA and categorize the remaining funds so that we're in compliance with the deadlines. As was just discussed, the deadlines are that by the end of twenty twenty-four, entities must have all of their funds for the American Rescue Plan allocated and that all must be spent by the end of twenty twenty-six. We have done a number of these grants and programs, et cetera. And there is a remaining balance of ARPA. And there've been some, there's been, I'll talk about it in a moment, but a little, some disencumbering or unencumbering of funds toward the D E S radio project, which has added to the balance. What we have on hand, I'm going to anticipate a question from Jim Mensor here of Levetown, because the last time we, I think, met and discussed this, there was somewhere in the neighborhood of six hundred and sixty thousand dollars or something that was reported available. We actually have three million, three sixty-five, nine fifty-nine. At that time, there was a sort of, I guess, unofficial set aside of two million dollars that I anticipated we were going to put toward renovations of the city, former city offices and so on. So that's, that's in this total number, which at the time was not yet allocated, but was anticipated or thought to be going to be part of that, part of this, sorry. So I have, I have four projects that I'm proposing to you that would allocate and encumber the remaining funds. Again, three million, three hundred and sixty-five thousand, nine fifty-nine, seventy. I have a summary for you guys.
As you go, can you designate which category and which pillar they fall under?
Yes, yeah, I can do that.
Do you give us a copy?
I'll give, yeah, this is, this is basically a summary of the packet I gave you last week. I just put it all in one sheet for you to review and look over before, have a week to look at it before this meeting. Again, that three million, three sixty-five, nine fifty-nine, seventy includes five hundred thousand dollars added to or unencumbered from the original project for radio towers, radio tower replacements and expansion of that system from the Department of Emergency Services due to some delays or some changes in sites or our inability to utilize some sites, a site that we thought we could and the reality that we're just not going to be able to do that by the end of twenty twenty-six. And so rather than keep it there and risk not using it and it going away, we're moving it back into the pot, so for other projects. So the four projects that, and some of these have came to you a long time ago and they've just been kind of riding to see where we are at the end of things and what can be made available. Some of them, such as the exhibition hall project, are more recent.
Let me ask, are we going to vote on these individually as you go along? Is that the plan?
I think we can lump them. I talked about that earlier, we just list them, list them in the, if you want to take separate...
As long as everyone agrees, I'll pack it.
Well, that's true. If you want to take them one by one, that might be... That's your preference, as chair, that's fine.
Yeah.
Yeah, let me, let me read through them first and then...
Yep.
Okay, so the first one is for the Community of Lebanon Association. These, they are asking for, to fund a project for earth planters for the downtown Lebanon area of twenty-three thousand, nine hundred and six dollars. Currently, they request funds each year from the hotel tax to support a, essentially a watering program for that, for those flowers and planters that they have as part of the attraction to downtown tourism category type. And they want to replace everything with planters that are, I'll call them self-watering. They don't create their own water, but they have reservoirs that reduce the need for manpower to, and therefore cost. So it's an upfront cost, but it saves in the long run to be able to have, you know, less maintenance on those downtown. Coleman Memorial Park is requesting funding to complete a pickleball court project in Coleman Memorial Park. They currently have tennis ball, or tennis courts, and they want to transition those to pickleball court. The total project cost is around eighty thousand dollars. They did get fifty thousand dollars from D C N R. And they are asking to put that toward, thirty thousand dollars of ARPA toward that project. That would fall under outdoor recreation category. The Lebanon Valley Exposition Center, as you just heard a lot about, multipurpose exhibition hall, is requesting two hundred and fifty thousand dollars toward their six million dollar, I'll call it a six million dollar project for the, for that new building. And then lastly...
Which would be under the tourism pillar.
Yes.
Excuse me, but I heard you say fifty thousand, he said two fifty.
Yes. Yes.
It's been...
And lastly, the remainder of the funds, if you subtract those three projects, what we have in remaining is three million, sixty-two thousand, fifty-three dollars and seventy cents. I propose that that funding be put toward the renovation and relocation, renovation of the former city offices in this building, relocation of several departments and including abatement of asbestos containing materials in the affected areas. I have estimates for all of the phases. We're looking at a multi-year project for this, which contains at least six phases to it, one A, one B, two A, two B, and so on up to four, all the way to four B over time, because some areas need to be done before others can, you know, there's a whole domino effect moving around. The total estimate for all of those renovations that I have, based on architect's estimate as well as mechanicals, et cetera, is one hundred to one hundred and fifty dollars a square foot for renovations and approximately six hundred to seven hundred and twenty-five thousand for asbestos abatement. Again, not the entire building being abated, but the areas where we're going to go into and do renovations and have an impact. Then we would abate any flooring that's asbestos containing, any insulation above the ceiling that's asbestos containing. And those are the main, those are the main ACMs or asbestos containing materials. So I have a range of cost of five point one million to seven point four million for renovations to this building. Again, proposing to use three million, sixty-two thousand from ARPA toward that. That category is, there are a number of categories actually that ARPA allows for improved H V A C systems as a result, you know, in the wake of COVID, which was where, as you all recall, where this really initiated, it was originated and was initiated, use of space for storage for supplies and materials, as well as the elimination of hazardous materials, which is where the asbestos abatement would come in. This would not reach to that whole project cost. However, Children in Youth Services, which is one of the impacted departments, has included in their needs-based budget to the state, one million dollars for renovations for the two offices that they would occupy, which leaves a remainder, which was, in round numbers, is about four million dollars we'd have available. If it's at the low end of five point one million, we would have, we'll have to cross that bridge when we get to it.
And I mean, this is a multi-year potentially.
Right, I mean, I'm looking, you know, that hundred to a hundred and fifty dollars a square foot. As I look at some of these estimates, I don't think, you know, remodeling or dressing up conference rooms necessarily takes a hundred and fifty dollars a square foot. And that's, you know, a much lesser cost. This is a range, they did this based on some renovations that Beers Hoffman is overseeing in Berks County. They really did renovations to existing county offices, so they have a pretty good handle on, on current costs for that type of, for that type of office space. So again, if we get to a point where that four million is short, which it likely will be, there may be other funds available from departments that are affected. There is a possibility to have to borrow or fund it out of existing sources in the general fund or otherwise, capital costs. So those are the four that I have listed, which would then encumber all of the ARPA funds granted to Lebanon County, which the total is twenty-seven million, five hundred and forty-one thousand, six hundred and twenty-eight dollars.
Could you repeat that? Could you repeat that? $27 million? That's what I was looking for, was that total.
Okay, so would it be my preference to take them one at a time?
Sure.
So is there a motion to?
A motion to approve, I, number one, propose the Lebanon Association for 2006 for their project.
Is there a second?
Second.
It's been moved in second. Any discussion regarding this motion? Not all in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Both same signs, so moved. Pickleball. Outdoor recreation category for Coleman Park, $30,000. Is there a motion?
Make a motion to give 30,000 to Coleman Park for pickleball courts.
Second. It's been moved in second. Any questions regarding the motion? Not all in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Both same signs, so moved. To the number three, the Expose, the multipurpose exhibition hall, under the tourism category for a quarter of a million dollars. Is there a motion?
I.
Approve that request.
I would like to add a stipulation that provided what was promised today is delivered and as presented. I have not had anything in writing, and that's a lot of money to go to one organization. I think they're worth it, but I want something of the drawings and that sort of, and the item is a written summary because.
They agreed to give that.
Pardon?
I think they did agree. Tom is going to get you.
Right. I would like that part of this, part of the motion to make sure that I do get that. I haven't gotten anything to this point, and so I want to make sure my trust is not violated.
Motion. I'm ready to move forward as I present the information we got. I trust that we will provide the information.
Yeah, and Tom is very credible. If he tells you he's going to get you that.
What credible would have been giving me this stuff in advance so I could look at it?
Are you willing to second the motion as it stands?
I'll second the motion, but I abstain because I don't have the information in front of me.
Okay.
You got it. And I have cost.
Pardon?
We'll contact them, see if we can get it for you today if possible.
So there's a motion to a second on the floor with the advance notice of the vote, but is there any further discussion regarding this particular number three with the Expo? Not all in favor of the motion, please indicate by saying aye. Aye, opposed. Any abstentions?
Me.
So it's a split vote, two in favor and one abstention. Number four is the courthouse renovations, which include asbestos abatement under the hazardous materials and HVAC improvement, improvement pillar.
Make a motion to approve the $3,62,053.70 for the courthouse abatement and renovation.
Second. Okay. Just to be consistent, I haven't seen any of the detail on this. I'll just trust that you're going to provide that at some point as you go along.
Is that what this is?
I mean, it's not the, it is to some extent, it's not the, I added new pictures, right? Need to add some detail, but I'm going to go along with this $3 million. Any discussion? Probably. It's not all in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Both same signs, so moved. All right. Comply with the ARPA deadlines and go from there. Anything else, Jamie?
No. M P O board at 11:30.
Okay, anything for this more? Yes?
Jamie, what was the number for the asbestos abatement, the estimate? Sorry, I didn't get that.
Yeah. A range of 600 to 725,000.
Thank you.
Nothing else? Motion to adjourn.
Second.
Stay in the journey. Thank you all for your input. It's been a great meeting with a lot of variety and wish you all Merry Christmas, Happy New Year.